Good evening. The purpose of tonight's meeting is the annual board reorganization. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Amanda, please call the roll.
Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Bleifeld.
Here.
Ms. Kiyvachi.
Here.
Mr. Golston.
Here.
Ms. Carrie Anakis.
Here.
Dr. Morris.
Yeah.
Mr. Walker. Mrs. Ginsburg.
Yeah.
Harrison Ernst.
Here.
Reed Harris.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivis-.
Nominations for the temporary board president.
I nominate Deanne Morris.
Second.
Hearing no other motions, we will now accept the motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And the nominations are duly closed. And I have a motion and a second to accept Dr. Morris as temporary board president.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Morris.
Thank you. I'm honored to be your president for these three minutes. As temporary board president is my obligation to call for nominations for a permanent president or board president for the upcoming year. We will now accept nominations for board president.
I nominate Amy Ginsburg.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other motions, we will now complete a roll call vote. Amanda, please call the roll to declare the upcoming board president.
Mr. Antonio.
Yes.
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Bleifeld.
Yes.
Ms. Kiyvachi.
Yes.
Mr. Golston.
Yes.
Ms. Carrie Anakis.
Yes.
Dr. Morris.
Yes.
Mrs. Ginsburg.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Mrs. Ginsburg.
Thank you. Great. And I do the board vice president now, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm having a hard time finding this for you. Amanda, where is the script on the agenda here? Oh, yes, thank you. Right. As board president, I will now call for nominations for a vice president of the board for the upcoming year. We will now accept nomination for vice president.
I nominate Joe Antonio.
Second.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other motions, we will now complete a roll call vote. Amanda, please call roll to declare the upcoming board vice president.
Mr. Antonio.
Yes.
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Bleifeld.
Yes.
Ms. Kiyvachi.
Yes.
Mr. Golston.
Yes.
Ms. Carrie Anakis. Dr. Morris.
Yes.
Mrs. Ginsburg.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Joe. All right. Great. And now we'll have public comment on the annual board reorganization. I don't see any public comments, okay? And no one's online, right? Do we have a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting? Oh, there is a comment. Okay. So we will hear the comment on board reorganization.
Okay, we have Carmena Taylor.
Okay, Carmena. This is on comments for board reorganization.
Absolutely. Can you everyone hear me?
Yeah.
So I just want to say it's really interesting that we have no dissent again on leadership. And I hope that by re-electing the same people in leadership that we will have more cooperation and accessibility to the leadership. If you want us as stakeholders to entrust in you and your leadership, then I see for leadership that we will have more cooperation and accessibility to the leadership. If you want us as stakeholders to entrust in you and your leadership, then I see for leadership that we will have more cooperation and accessibility to the leadership. If you want us as stakeholders to entrust in you and your leadership, then I see for leadership that we will have more cooperation.
There seems to be a delay.
Accessibility to the leadership.
Amanda, I think there's an issue.
If you want us as stakeholders to entrust in you and your leadership, then I see for leadership that we will have more cooperation.
There seems to be a delay.
Accessibility to the leadership.
Amanda, I think there's an issue.
If you want us as stakeholders to entrust in you and your leadership. Amy, can I speak?
Yeah. Carmena, we're just restarting the clock. I just want to make sure there's not an issue before I have you restart.
Okay.
I don't want the same problem for you. She's checking on it? Okay. Are we good, Amanda?
Okay. Carmena, let's try again.
Basically, what I was trying to say is that you have re- the board has re-elected the same officers for the third or fourth cycle. And I keep remembering, Amy, you saying to trust you, to trust the board, to trust. And I hope that when you've made this decision, now that you're going into your next cycle of leadership, that you will be more accessible and more cooperative to the concerns of the community. There's no dissent on anything and there's no dialogue about anything. And you kind of go through the motions. And that's very concerning as someone that is invested in all the communities, in our school community, and the parents that reach out to me to support them. So I just want you to keep in mind that with leadership has a great deal of responsibility. And if you keep electing the same people, then something has to shift for growth as we, as you continue to elect them. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Carmena. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Then we'll close public comment. All right. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. A motion to adjourn seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The reorganization meeting is closed. It's seven thirty, okay? So our next meeting then will start at seven thirty.
The fifteen minute break. Fifteen minute break.
Can we start with roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Here.
Ms. Kiyabachi?
Here.
Ms. Mr. Golson?
Here.
Ms. Karianakis?
Here.
Dr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Ginsberg?
Here.
Harrison Ernst?
Here.
Reed Harris?
Here.
Great, thank you. And if ever do, please join me to resist the pledge of allegiance again. Great. Welcome to everyone. Joining us this evening for our December 2nd meeting of the Wissickon School Board. First, we list down our agenda, our prior meetings. We met on October 28th for our work session. On November 4th was our regular public board meeting, and on November 18th was our Racial Equity Oversight Committee Community Listening Session. And then we list out our upcoming meetings. On December 9th is our next regular public board meeting, and prior to that will be our Audit Committee Meeting. On January 13th, we'll have the Communications Committee Meeting and a Facilities and Transportation Committee Meeting. January 21st will have Health, Wellness and Safety and Racial Equity Oversight Committee Meetings. January 27th will be a work session, and February 3rd, a regular public board meeting. Now we have our presentation, the Wissickon High School Monthly Highlights.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a great month at Wiss. I feel like I haven't been in a meeting here in forever, but it's great to be back. First off, Mrs. Walden is a wonderful presence in our school, and she was recognized as a semifinalist for the Rising Inspiring Schools Award. I remember the day after, everyone walked through the halls, and I heard the congratulations, and it was so awesome. Because, you know, a lot of times, wonderful people like that don't get recognized as much as they should. Beyond that, we had our World Language Fair. That was great. So many students participated in that, from running it, to participating in it, to supporting it, and like buying the fruit that different places sold. That was awesome. Mia and I went to the Senior Banquet on November 4th on the Spirit of Philadelphia. That was super fun. It was a great time. We had some awesome chaperones, great food. It was beautiful. It was the perfect temperature. Loved that. And last for me is our blood drive, which was awesome. We had the Red Cross come, and I mean, when I was there, there was like a line of 20 people waiting to give blood. They made an announcement, like whoever wants to come can do it, and it just flooded it, and they were there like way past their scheduled time, just fit everyone in. It was beautiful to see.
Good evening. Nice to be here for the first time and share. Wiss Theater put on the play The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime, and that was a great success. It was great to see that their hard work paid off. And they have the musical in the spring coming up, so that would be great to see also. We also had NHS induction for the new inductees. We had 115 new inductees, so that was really exciting. And Ms. Lottie and the officers did a great job this year. For Veterans Day, camarada had their annual veterans honoring songs at the Veterans Memorial outside of the auditorium at the high school, so that was great to see the veterans of our community honored. And Ramp Riot was a huge success for our three-for-one Miss Daisy Robotics Team, so they got first place and looking to have a great season ahead. So stay on the lookout for that.
I do want to add something. I don't know if you all know, but there is a fall when a fall concert for vocalists, and you don't need to be in the musical or the, you know, the vocal program to participate. And we had two school board student representatives who both not only sing, but played their guitar on stage. And one of them-
Give it up for Reed and Isabel?
No, no, no. It was Harrison and Mia who did that. I didn't, well, I know my daughter's talented, but we, Harrison was so good!
Thank you, thank you.
He was so good. I was so impressed. It's very hard to sing and play the guitar at the same time. Like, I could barely walk and talk at the same time, so it's, I'm, I was very, very-
Yeah, I apologize for getting that. That was a great night. I really enjoyed that. There's a lot of awesome performances.
Yeah.
And again, because of the fact that you didn't have to be part of any music program, because I'm not. Like, there were so many people I didn't know were interested in music and were just phenomenal. So that was a wonderful evening. I think that's all we got, guys. Like-
Very cool. Do you have a video to share, Duffy?
She wants to, she wants to publish it before I start sharing.
The picture, great. Well, thank you for those updates. Did anyone else need? Yeah, Paul, go ahead. Yeah. I think they are. Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, cool again. Thank you, guys, for the updates. All right, so now we're at our first public comment period. And the board appreciates terms in the community. A maximum of five speakers will be given the same topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes in the interest of fairness, and in order to treat all speakers equally, it's board's practice not to engage in dialogue with speakers when appropriate. Follow responses will be posted on board docs. When you approach, please state your name, your municipality of residence, and the topic on which you're speaking. And for the first public comment period, we have one person registered for in-person, and that's Sayed Al.
Hi, my name is Sayed Al Setal, Whippein Township, and what I'm going to speak about today is an association. So there's been some talks in reference to gaining more, gaining an association for melanated children and indigenous, as well as indigenous children. So I just wanted to talk about maybe a proposal for that, and perhaps the goals could be the cultural presentation will promote and celebrate indigenous traditions, Black traditions, our languages and our culture. Community building, foster a sense of belonging among indigenous and melanated children. Advocacy would be to address the challenges like access to resource, representation, equitable opportunities. The education would be to raise awareness about the cultures, issues and history among the broader school and its community. Some activities, we could have like guest speakers, cultural workshops, social gatherings and mentorships. I was thinking about counseling and wellness to address mental health and stress issues unique to melanated children. And academic resources could be studies groups, scholarship, information and professional networking. I feel that it is something that is needed in the middle school. I do know that we have something called the BSU in the high school, and I feel that it would be great for it to transition into that, because the middle school children are having a really hard time with knowing who they are and identifying with themselves and having some issues around what things are good to say, not good to say to one another, cultural differences, and how maybe, I know, for instance, my, my son has friends of all different ethnicities. However, I've been noticing that there's been like certain words going around that is not okay for the melanated children to say, or any other children of any other background. And this is coming across as like, it's like normal. And I had to address, dress it over the weekend. It was a text message sent to my son with those kind of words. And I just think that it would be a good space and a safe space for children to speak about, about what they think is appropriate and inappropriate to say to one another. Thank you.
Thanks, Sayed. Is anybody registered online?
Yes, we have one hand raised. We have Emily.
Okay, Emily, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Sorry, I was logging in as my daughter. My name is Ray Casper. I'm the parent of two children at the elementary school level. So my comments are on the HR report. It is noted that there is one special education teacher from Stony Creek and the elementary supervisor of special education who are both resigning effective January 2025. I would like specific answers to the following questions from the board or administration in a timely manner. What is the transition plan for these employees? When and how will these positions be filled? How will the special education department ensure fidelity in implementing the IEPs of students affected by these resignations? And additionally, how will the special ed department ensure a smooth transition to middle school for those affected students, given the lack of a case manager and the lack of a supervisor in this critical transition planning process in the spring of 2025? On the Solicitor Report and Curriculum Committee Report, I noticed three more outplayed students and settlement agreements totaling another $180,000. This is on top of the more than $5 million from the past 15 months that I referenced in my November 4th comments. Which leads me to my final set of questions and comments. The district is now in the process of filling one supervisor of special education, and the current list of job openings includes four special education teachers. Two for the high school, one for the middle school, and one for the elementary school. No other vacancies are listed. Why are there so many vacancies in special education? Why are these professionals leaving at such an atypical time mid-year when contracted positions elsewhere are few and far between? Why is the district considering filling three of these positions as long-term subs as opposed to contracts? As others have pointed out, the district is clearly violating the rights of students in special education at the middle school level. And these, these new resignations and vacancies add insult to injury, which will further violate the rights of even more students with disabilities. When will the board wake up and acknowledge that special education and student services are in need of a complete overhaul? How many staff members do we need to lose? How much more taxpayer money needs to be spent to place students outside of the district? How many more lawsuits need to be settled? Would any of this be acceptable if these were your children who were affected? Enough is enough, and the burden to address this isn't all of you. You've got the hand-selected superintendent you all wanted. Now it's time to make something happen and do right by the students in special ed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. All right, we have no one else in person. Is there anyone else online? No, there are no more hands raised online. All right, so we'll close our first public comment period. And we'll move on to the Board President Report. And my first item is to approve the appointment of Steve Walker to North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operation Committee for a three-year term effective December 24 through December 27. And that'll be a voting item for next week. So Steve will be staying on as our representative at joint Monto along with Duffy. And the second item is the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the Wissickon Education Alliance and the Wissickon School District dated July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. And this is the very exciting news, that we were able to reach an early ver deal with our union. It's a very fair deal to both parties, so that is very exciting news for the district and the union. So I do want to thank Tim and Dania, who's unfortunately not here, for all of your work in working with the union to reach this agreement. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the thanks to the administration, Danielle and Tim. I think this is a great accomplishment, and especially to the WEA, TJ, Kirk, Lisa, all the leadership and all the teachers for being able to make this happen right now, I think is a great just position for all of us to be in. So I think this is just a great accomplishment, and I just thank everyone involved. So thank you very much.
Same here. And just for clarify, so, and period. And to clarify, the reason why we're voting in Steve was because he was filling for Ronnie? And, and that's why we're not doing the North Monco for me? Like, help me understand why we're only voting for Steve.
I think you're on staggered terms.
Oh, okay. Oh, so we're on staggered terms. I see, I see. I'm very excited to have Steve stay on with me. We have a lot of fun together. Thanks.
Any other comments? All right, so we'll have those voting items next week. All right, Superintendent Report.
Thank you. My one item is the a review, no voting tonight, of the 25-26 school calendar. We have some motivated people, both in district and in the community in terms of getting some clarity on the next school year to make plans, whatever plans they have to make in advance. This would be very helpful. The, the calendar for next year follows the same construct as we have been following for past several years now. There's, there's important change, though, in that the new collective bargaining that Amy referenced as in it, two additional new early dismissal days. And one is in October and one is in April. And that's just a good way to, to help provide some time for teachers and also provide some time for this district to conduct professional development activities. So we anchor those, well, we make sure we don't have any conflict with that thing April 1st before the testing starts. The October 1st happens to be on the same days our practice ACTs and PSATs, so those are early dismissal days anyway for the high school, so that's a intention. The other change was, as you may recall, previous collective bargaining agreements had an early dismissal day first or the last day before winter break, which is what we do this year, Friday the 20th is early dismissal. It's much better to have that earlier in the year when we can use that time for professional development, especially for support staff. So that day is moving from December to actually the first week of school, the day before Labor Day weekend. Support staff's here. They're not going to come in on some other day, just two hours of professional development. But being that they're here anyway, there's a lot of required training we need to get done, and it is really hard to get that scheduled. So this is, these three days are going to be really, really good for our professional development needs and also needs of teachers, which is why I was part of that group. Questions on, on this? Again, no voting tonight.
Thank you, Jim. That's really helpful. The one date that I'm still a little confused about is the Thursday, February 12th is another half-day. Is that? I don't recall us having the day before President's Day weekend at half-day.
That's been in there for, I think, since the last collective bargaining.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Did I, maybe I always pull my kids out, didn't realize.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment quickly that I think from, a lot of times from a parent point of view, the half-days are difficult because you often have to scramble to find childcare. So I do want to acknowledge that, but knowing that this was part of the agreement that teachers wanted, and I, I think is, like you pointed out, Jim, a valuable time to use for sometimes professional development. So it's kind of a necessary part of the schedule we have to make, but I do like want to acknowledge and sort of apologize to the parents who have to scramble to make these extra accommodations, because I know it's not easy, especially with elementary school kids. I know that a lot of people were asking me about the calendar. Is it out yet? Is it out yet? So I know this is a welcome calendar to come.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, so we'll move on to Assistant Superintendent Report, Dr. Block.
Thank you. Good evening. I have informational item to share, just to recap about the In-service Day on November 5th, as well as the professional learning opportunities we provided for support staff on November 25th. So on the 5th, that was our In-service Day, November 5th, when we had all of our professional staff engaging in various learning opportunities. Those experiences included primarily opportunities to focus on curriculum, whether it was focusing on curriculum implementation, or assessment alignment, or resource planning. All of those opportunities focused on providing time for teachers to engage with one another and collaborate, which is something that we've heard from teachers that needing, needing the time for. So that was a wonderful opportunity to provide for teachers. And then on November 25th- And then on November twenty-fifth, we had um, support staff professional learning, where our support staff engaged in uh, PD opportunities focused on positive behavioral interventions and supports, is which is something that we know is a big initiative for the district. And um, opportunities to learn about structured literacy strategies, which is something else that's important um, in the in the field of education right now especially. Um, then we had our secretarial and clerical staff have opportunities to focus on Infinite Campus and Microsoft three sixty-five. So we were able to um, get some input from those uh, colleagues to see what were the areas that they wanted to focus on to develop their skills around, and were able to shape that professional learning uh, to target those areas. So it was it seemed to be very well received. Um, so that concludes my report this evening.
Great, thank you so much. Any comments or questions? All right, same. Then we'll move on. Thank you. Our board solicitor report.
Thank you. We just have one review item to be voted on at the next meeting, and it is a settlement agreement between a family, student, and the district. We have a settlement agreement, and it's supposed to be that. And that is the one we do.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Are there any comments or questions? All right, thank you. Board secretary report, Tim?
There are three items this month: the work session on October twenty-eighth, the regular meeting on November fourth, and the REOC meeting on November eighteen.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, the board treasurer report.
Item thirteen-one is the approval of the October members' report.
Any comments or questions? And I understand you're also doing the HR report this evening.
I'm just having so much fun. Okay, for HR, for your review tonight are seven items under section fourteen, the Human Resources Report. The first three action items include appointments, resignations, changes of status, leaves of absence, extracurricular changes, volunteer additions, and winter extracurriculars. Item four is an agreement for additional IEP support to some of the our special education staff. Fourteen-five is a contract for Cobra Services. And lastly, items six and seven are for new and revised extracurricular job descriptions.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, Zepi, go ahead.
So, Tim, I realize you're not Danielle. So maybe you could just take copious notes so that perhaps she can follow up um, for next week when she's back. Um, I too had the same concern when I saw that we had three resignations for special ed um, and wanted to understand uh, what's our our plan here? Um, and kind of what what are we working towards, and is there something more that we should be looking into? Um, because that's certainly um, you know, a little troublesome. Uh, the second thing was for the winter extracurriculum, sports and activities. Um, I know it might be um, early, but um, last year uh, we agreed that we would put in some place um, an evaluation of coaches. And seeing that our coaches are on here, wanted to see how that's going, how's the response been, what's the response rate like? How are the students kind of taking on this new opportunity to uh, use this tool to provide feedback? And what do what does the athletic director and the coaches think about some of the preliminary data that might be coming in? Hopefully, you are getting some in, so wanted to see how that's going. Um. It was, I don't remember which one it was, um, forgive me, but I saw we have an agreement with Rothman. Was this on this one or was it on the on another?
That's under finance.
Oh, it's under finance. Okay, I'll save that um, for finance. Okay, so those were my two questions.
Thank you, Zepi. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And I want to know if uh, anyone in, I mean, or Tim, if any of you had any answers off the top of your head to any of the questions that we did have or about something Danielle will have to get back to.
The the most of Danielle, if I can tell you that we we you're right, we did implement the new feedback system this school year, so there wouldn't be anything for winter yet. We did get some. Right. Yes.
Dana, starting.
Yes, from Paul, yes.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you for that report and filling in. I think you did a good job. Danielle will be proud.
All right.
Our communications committee, Zepi.
No informational or voting items for this for next week or this week.
All right, thank you. Curriculum and Technology, please.
There are four items up for your review tonight. The first one, sixteen-one, Whistick and High School Program of Studies for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, there have been no course additions or removals for next year. Also, the North Monco Technical Career Career Center is now available to ninth graders at Whistick and High School. This is a change from, I think, tenth grade we previously started. The freshman seminar requirement will be waived at the high school for those to choose uh, to enroll in North Monco as ninth graders. The second one, sixteen-two, approval to extend the contract for mental health services with child and family focus uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and the twenty-five, twenty-six school years in the amount not to exceed uh, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Sixteen-three is the approval of outplacement, educational services, and tuition for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for two students. Um, and those are to not exceed the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. And the last item, sixteen-four, approval to purchase CrowdStrike Falcon Complete, a cybersecurity system from E Plus using Co-Stars purchasing contracts in the amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty cents. And are there any questions or comments for Dr. Dewan?
I I actually have a comment. Um, I I am uh, excited to see that we're looking into additional mental health services. I um, I just was at an event and I was talking to a woman who is in the Lancaster School District, so not our school district, and she's a psychologist. And she, they have a program there where they place psychologists within each building, each school building, and they actually get reimbursed by insurance. And she sees students during school hours, um, during, you know, for for mental health services. Um, so I wanted to raise this in case this might be something we would also want to look into as additional resources. I can email you the the company that does this, and she said that they're like nationwide. They they have resources nationwide, and they're not school employees. They're kind of contracted in to do this service, and then they bill the insurance company of that student. So I thought that was fascinating. Uh, I I don't know how effective it is or any data around that, but maybe something worth investigating in. As you know, these fees, you know, as much as I would love to provide all these resources, one, we never will be able to have all the resources that we possibly need, and secondly, we're paying for them. Um, you know, we have to, you know, not pay something to pay for that. So is there a way to leverage some other resources that would be uh, reimbursed by insurance companies was something that might be worth looking into? I don't know.
Zepi, go on. I have actually two questions. So one was um, kind of piggybacking off of that. I remember during budget season, we were talking about um, having possibly a company work with us to collect, help collect money. Um, and beginning and spoke with us. Is that something that we ever follow through? We are doing. So great, and has that been successful? We've been able to collect funds?
There were, there's a um, the process through which we've been working with the um, consultant who has been reviewing our practices and procedures and paperwork uh, around that process has been insightful and enlightening to help us to see where there would potentially be some additional efficiencies around that process. So that has been very helpful. Um, and we have been able to identify some low-hanging fruit, if 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 that, you know, to to frame phrase it that way, um, where we could leverage putting in place some some strategic moves this year to be able to hopefully result in additional funding coming through that process. So that has been good. So yes, we did. We had meetings and conversations throughout the summer and this fall, and we were able to put some things in place.
For hopefully for next year then.
For for some things in place for this year, and then hopefully additional things in place for next year. But yeah, there were some things we could do right away.
Great, great, awesome. And then so my second question also, I feel like this has come up before, and I just wanted to have, maybe clarify maybe for the public. Settlements versus outplacement. So I realize there's services, you know, we can't provide here. We can't provide a hospitalization program. We have, you know, nurses and doctors on staff to provide that kind of programming, and there's other programming I'm sure we cannot provide. Can you give some examples of things that we might out, like I see here we have two outplacements right here, and how that differs from a settlement? So that when you're talking about special education costs, even though our numbers may be, you know, X amount, a lot of that may be outplacements for services we simply can't provide.
Yes, um, and I I won't speak, obviously, to the students that are on our agenda for approval. Um, but um, Mrs. Ginsburg, you really spoke to that in terms of um, when a district um, identifies a need for outplacing services for a student, it's because the district has identified that the needs of the students are as such that their needs cannot be met in the district, that their needs are significant enough or complex enough, um, multifaceted enough that um, they require services that are outside of the realm of what the school district can provide. Um, we we certainly provide a significant amount, an extensive amount of services in the district. A hypothetical example might be a student with multiple disabilities, a student who is uh, has hearing impairment and vision impairments, blind, deaf. Um, a student that has such significant um, mental health needs that they are not able to access education without being in an environment that's therapeutic and um, requires, you know, all-day, every-day intensive mental health services and and therapeutic supports. Um, so those are some very broad examples, not related to what's on our agenda for this for this approval.
Of course, Dan, I don't want to speak to these specific students. I just wanted to be able to clarify for the public that there are situations where we simply cannot provide the services and we need to outplace certain students, and while that may be at a cost to the district, it's because we cannot provide services, unfortunately, for certain types of situations. And that that does differ from a settlement. Thank you.
And and this actually, I loved your question, Amy, because I think some context here would be so helpful and maybe an exercise that we could do maybe when we're doing finance or attempt to add another thing, but you know, I bet we have a higher correlation of of some of these costs because we have more students going out on mental health issues that are being hospitalized and that they're getting educational services while they're out, and you know, we're having to reimburse some of these things. I wonder like how like there's probably a calculation that we could do that would kind of very easily explain why our costs have gone up significantly um, to to kind of contextualize what is happening because I bet we're not the only district. And that is kind of in this same kind of situation that we're in, right? Like with these kind of costs. Um, and no fault to the student, no fault to anybody. It's just perhaps a little bit of the environment we are in currently, unfortunately, and that's why we're seeing this trend and that uptick of costs that goes with it. So I loved your question, Amy. It was a really like that, like I I bet there's something there to that. I did want to ask a second question that I forgot before. So I'm so excited to see um, that next year we're going to have ninth graders going to North Monco. Um, if it's um, allowed, I would love to know um, how many students have actually put in their papers to um, um, like try to go to North Monco. I know I know kids can change their minds up to the very last moment, but I would love to see like how how much engagement or interest we're getting by opening this up to the eighth graders to uh, consider for ninth grade. Um, I I do think it's a great thing. We were the one and last school out of all of North Monco, right? Two? Oh, Sarderton. Um. No. Um, but uh, you know, one of the stats they had shared with us of like maybe last year was in some of the programs that are very rigorous, if you do not start in ninth grade, you will not get, well, the cert requirement to actually go out and do that trade at graduation because it's so intense. Um, so I I would love to see how that's opening up that door of of opportunity for some students who might be interested in in looking at that direction.
We'll certainly keep the board updated.
Yeah.
Um, and your point about the impact on students' ability to get the number of credits to get their certification in their in their respective fields was one that um, our students actually shared with the high school administration team when they solicited the feedback from students directly, students who have been in the North Monco program around um, their thoughts of entering at tenth grade versus what it might have been like to reimagine going in a ninth grade, and that was one of the elements they lifted up um, as how how this would be advantageous to students in the future. So it was great to hear directly from our students uh, to know that their, you know, their voice matters. So, thank you.
So we're approving this next week. Um, do the eighth graders at the middle school already know that this is going to be an opportunity for them? Is this being advertised?
Uh, yes, but um, this is an informational item, so this this item will be for approval for next week. Um, but yes, um, eighth grade counselors and um, the administrative team have been working closely with the high school for this transition period so that students who are coming in um, for that opportunity will be well-informed that it's an option and get to learn about the program, and and all of that good work is going to be happening to equip our eighth graders to know that that option is available to them. Yes, thank you.
And and I believe um, there was actually like a um, an open house that was specific for eighth graders so that they could understand um, what the options look like. Because I I looked at their their kind of uh, directory, and I I would be like, I have no idea. I'd read this. So when you go there and you see things, I think it really opens up, you know, your eyes and understanding of like, oh, okay, I see, you know, it's they do a really phenomenal job, and I'm I'm very excited that we're opening this up for our ninth graders.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you for your report, Dan. Um, all right, uh, facilities and transportation.
Thanks. Um, we have no informational items, but we have one um, item for consideration and vote for next week. It's approval to discard or sell obsolete equipment. Um, we're actually looking at two buses. So again, we'll be voting on that for next week. Tim, anything you want to add about the two buses?
The buses are ordered in ten years, therefore they're not eligible for subsidy. There, we are replacing them by leasing buses that are eligible for subsidy from for student, and we will only be paying when we take them out of the yard, so therefore it will save us money.
Right. Any other? Any other questions? All right, that's it.
I actually have a quick question. Tim, does first student have any electric buses that are available for leasing? Is that an option ever or no?
We don't have the ability to charge them. So if we put them in, there'd be no place to charge them. We are looking at the potential of putting in electric vans. And we're getting prices and I'm preparing all that stuff for review later, but I added all the pricing associated with that.
Thank you. That would be great.
And could we also look, I know I brought this up once before, but could we also look at hybrid, please? If electric is not like an avenue, like because of like it costs too much or we don't have the facilities to have plugins, can we at least try going hybrid at least?
So the 10 passenger vans that I'm looking at would hopefully be hybrids. Because there is no, will be plug-in hybrids. There is no electric vans at currently, the only ones that are electric are 15 passenger vans. So those would be some of the bigger ones that we get is 15 passenger vans. I'm in a debate whether or not you're required to have a CDL or not to drive those. And I'm trying to get information before we do anything else with those.
Tim, so I have two sort of unrelated questions too, but that are transportation related. One is how is the program going with the cameras on the buses?
It's going well. There's training and there's also a learning curve for the drivers from how they do stuff and how the police needed to be done so that the violation stick, one of the biggest things by prior experience is the same answer is you must come to a complete stop or to stop where it goes out. Otherwise, anyone that goes past it afterwards is free to go. So they're being taught that in training. We did have a training session on that. It's the same thing where I was before, big training, numbers went up on actually catching the violators. I've had a lot of conversations with local police officers. There have been no real problems. We had one area where it's an exit 309 that was creating an issue because the exit's kind of going past. So we did put a gate around that so it wouldn't create an issue for police because obviously you can't give someone exit ticket. But overall, it's been working well.
Great. Oh, my other question was, this is something, I don't know if I ever talked to you about it. I wanted to wait a while back about a Find My Bus type app. Is this something we could look into?
What was it?
Like it's, I think there were ten uses, Find My Bus.
It's like a bus tracker app. The parents know like approximately where the kid's bus is.
We do have new software that we're putting in and that is something we could look at down the road with the new software. For right now, I just need to get this software up and running. We're going from an older software to more state of the art software, which will help hopefully with our routing. And once the routing's done, I think that's something that should look good.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move.
I have a comment on that. I think it's a, the Find My Bus thing's a great idea. And Reid was just mentioning like, I remember when I was a freshman, I took the bus. Like I had to walk a good 10 minutes from my house to get to the stop. And like, they're just not on time, which is understandable. It's an incredible job to manage all that on schedule. It'd be like January and you're standing on the corner for like 15 minutes. And so I think the ability to like look on your phone, like, oh, my bus is running 10 minutes late today would be super helpful.
The cold weather is what put it up front of my mind. Yes, I stand out and freeze every morning. Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, finance committee report. Steve, are you able to do this virtually or do you want me to?
I, I think with connectivity, it might be best to have Tim handle it.
There's seven items for this month. The first one is a regular financial reports for October. The next is a holding place for the approval of the annual audit, which will be reviewed by the audit committee meeting next week prior to the voting meeting. The next item is to approve the budget transfer as noted by the auditors. This is just completing the process of moving the budget to where the final figures expenditures ended up. 18.4 is a resolution not to exceed the Act One Index for the next school year's budget, followed by the approval of the spring sports supply bid. 18.6 is to approve Rothman or the Pity Sir provide athletic training services at both the high school and middle school for the balance of this year and the next two years. And finally is the list of payments for October.
Great, thanks, Tim. And Becky, you had a question on 18.6.
Yeah, this is, this is where I have the question. So the Rothman contract, can someone walk me through how we got here? And, you know, what we're looking to achieve with this, please?
So currently we have athletic trainer's position was company left. We have a staff member.
Wait, say that again, I'm sorry?
Company prior.
Oh, the company prior, okay, yes.
The athletic trainer is still here.
Okay.
But he's run through the IU. So in order to get this better situated, we went out to RFP and sent this out to all the different athletic trainer companies that the districts, counties, districts, school districts use. We got two responses that were able to accommodate us. First one came in higher. Rothman came in, they're well known and have a very good reputation with regards to it. One of the things that we also asked, they would consider would be to add from just a high school to a middle school slash high school so that they would be at the middle school and there's middle school events. And if there's not, there'd be two athletic trainers to help better support the high school with that. Currently, I can't speak to their plans, but they're obviously would interview the individuals that are working here currently if they were interested in that. And then they would fill the positions. The harder position would be the second athletic trainer position, which they will supply us with on an hourly basis versus a contract until they get an individual that's permanent.
Tim, if I could ask a question, it's my understanding that Rothman will be engaged with services of our current athletic trainer.
Yes.
Okay, I don't know what that is. So he will then, instead of working for that, through the IU.
He will work through Rothman?
Yes.
I never even realized that he was working through the IU.
Well, he wasn't prior, before he was working through another company like Rothman. And then they got out of the business. Everyone's getting in this business. This is very, this is a very cost, or I should say, very low margin, high vulnerability for companies. So they stopped doing it. But, but what, it was imperative to us to have our current trainer be back with us. So, but they're happy to have that because they can't find him for this anyway. So the second one, middle school, it's going to be very hard for them.
Okay. And then how, I don't actually fully understand how we actually even situate the person. Like, are they there after school for all sports, just games, just like certain sports? Like, I don't even fully appreciate how this is structured. Do you know?
Yeah, we can get you a full schedule. Basically, the.
School per se, it's just like, are they there for all things or certain things? Or what's on, what's not on, you know, just so, it's, it's a high ticket item and I understand like.
Well, I think.
Why, but I just want to understand exactly what we're paying.
Good, I like it. And also I think a key distinction is currently at the middle school, we have a nurse provide help, coverage after hours on an overtime basis. And this, if they can find somebody, will replace that because that's, that's good, but not ideal. Ideally, you'd have an athletic trainer who's down under specifically athletic injuries and things like this. The nurse certainly knows what she's doing and can help. But if we can find a second person, then we will have this coverage, which will outline the construct for you, like practices, game. We'll get that to you, but at both campus or at both schools rather than just the one.
Okay, cool. Excellent, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Can I just ask, what's the downside? Or would we ever consider just hiring directly through the school district or we wouldn't want to do that?
It, it, yeah, it's, it's cost effective for us to go to a contractor. So we're trying to, trying to be as efficient as we can. But the good news is without compromising the quality of the product, which in this case is a contracted service.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing that, we'll move on to our politics committee report. Marshall?
Thank you. As part of tonight's report, we're going to talk about the request we'll have for next week for the approval of the second and final reading of board policies that were originally reviewed back on October 21st. We have already done the first reading and approval. The second reading and approval goes back to these policies, some of which are redundant because they apply to both students and staff. And so they have to do with issues such as student discipline, weapons offenses, tobacco and vaping product use, controlled substance, use of facilities, public records requests, emergency preparedness and response, relations with law enforcement agencies, school security personnel, child abuse reporting, opening exercises and public attendance at school events. So next week we'll be looking for approval of the second and final reading of 19.1 through 19.14.
Great, thanks, Marshall. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing them, thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Racial equity oversight, Paul?
Thanks, Amy. We have no items received.
Oh, do you want to just give us a recap?
Did that last meeting, didn't it? Oh, the, yes. So we did have a in-person community meeting for, it was November 18th, I believe, right? Very good attendance. We had the opportunity to cover a number of items that referred into the district that we were able to get feedback from all members in attendance. We had small breakout sessions of smaller tables that also included students as well as administrators and athletes and board members. Any other details we should add or?
I can just share those two, the two topics. It was structured a little differently this time. The committee suggested to have two topics instead of three so that there will be a longer span of time for each topic. And that seemed to be well received by the community members in attendance. So one topic was focused on belongingness and the other topic focused on district's responses to racial disparities and discipline. So that seemed to be well received by the members in attendance who appreciated having more robust conversations.
Yeah, I did, I personally enjoyed that, that format a lot and we did get great feedback. Thank you. Thanks, Ann.
Great, thank you for the recap. Any questions are coming? All right, thank you again. Health wellness and safety, Rosetta, it looks like there's no report this week, right?
Right, no information, no action. And the next meeting is January 21st.
Great, thank you. Extracurricular, Marshall?
Thank you. As noted at the last meeting, I would have a report tonight. We did meet for the Fall Extracurricular Committee Meeting Review back on November 6th. And there were numerous proposals for sports or clubs at both the high school and the middle school level. And I'll just go through them quickly with you. We did approve as an after-school club, the Italian Culture Club, unique to students with an Italian background to be able to find a place of belonging in the Whistaken community. It is not currently a club for those students. That was recommended as an after-school club. Next one was the Badminton Club. This one was approved as an IE, but not as an after-school club because there are other sports that take place that this one was more appropriate within an IE type of a program. The next one was Educators Rising. And by the way, these are all at the high school level. And the purpose of this club was to emphasize between teaching and learning. And this one was approved as an after-school club. The Forensic Science Club was approved as an IE. The Personal Finance Club was approved as an after-school club and merged with the proposed Young Investor Society. We had the Writers in Training, which was merged with Society of Writers, formerly the Poetry Club. And this was approved as an IE. We also had the Lego Club. This is, I think, self-explanatory. This one was approved to run as an IE as opposed to an after-school club. We have the Young Investor Society, again, merged with the Personal Finance Club. And then we had Crafts for a Cause, which was approved as an IE, not as an after-school club. So those are the high school clubs. At the middle school level, we did approve the Korean Language and Culture Club. Again, a club providing an avenue for students to learn more about Korean culture and language that was approved as an after-school club. And then additional item, as noted earlier, we did approve the change of the WHS Poetry Club to Society of Writers. So it was a busy meeting. We got a bunch of wonderful new clubs that are going to be added, both after-school and as IEs to further enrich all of our students who have interest in these different areas.
Wow, I love all those new clubs. It's awesome. Thank you, Marshall. Any comments or questions? I love this. I, I'm always so surprised with the different options we offer. Do we do something similar for the middle school? Like similarly to what one of our moms kind of raised? Do we have clubs of, of different, you know, different interests or different kind of cultural awareness or what have you at the middle school level?
Yes, and that's why we just approved the Korean Language and Culture Club at the middle school level. Yes, that was a middle school if I didn't say it earlier, but yes, we do.
And Marshall, if a, if a student wants to create a club at the middle school level, do they know how to go about that or do you know the process or is that a question for maybe Dr. Clark?
Well, I think that what they need to do is approach their teacher. Find out if there's a common interest because you have to have a certain number of students who are interested in the, in the club. If you can put that together along with the supervisor, you can always make a proposal to have that club done. So I would urge anybody who is interested in something new to get a, speak to a teacher or supervisor to see if something that's not already offered is part of something else. If it's not offered as part of something else, then come up with the idea. See if you can get enough people interested and we can see if we can support it.
That's great. And it sounds like we as a board don't say no to the new clubs.
We don't what?
We don't say no to the new clubs, so all are welcome, right?
Well, no, not every club.
Not every.
There are certain clubs that either are already part of a different type of a club or type of interest, or simply don't have the support that would recognize. Because remember, you have to have not only student interest, but you have to have supervisor. So you have to have resources there for the clubs themselves. And we, we monitor this. If they lose interest over time, we may have to adjust that and not have them as an after-school club or an IE because we can't support it. So really there has to be an ongoing or sustained interest. There has to be an ongoing and sustained ability to keep kids showing up. And then you have to obviously have a supervisor for it. So there's all different types of possibilities. Sometimes you've heard, we don't approve every single club for one reason or another. It may not just be something that's appropriate to do in, in the club setting or actual setting or even an IE setting. A lot of them aren't, but we evaluate each one individually.
I mean, one thing I want to add regarding extracurriculars, that there is, there is a cost associated with every single club that we do because every single one is required to be staffed by like a, like a teacher, some staff sponsor. And that person then gets paid a stipend, could be $2,000, could be $4,000, a $2,000 for being the coach or sponsor of that club. So we can't just approve everything because there's an open-ended cost then. We do offer a huge portfolio of extracurriculars already. And so I think our extracurriculars job is like looking at the portfolio. There are some clubs that have waned in interest. You know, maybe we could have that one kind of go by the wayside to make space for a new club that is more interesting, right? So we, it's not just like an open-headed thing. There is some evaluation that's occurred just to maintain some fiscal responsibility.
And you may remember certainly in the spring, we did not approve the proposed ice cream club. And, and you may remember certainly in the spring, um, we did not approve the proposed ice cream club. So ice cream club, there was a proposal for an ice cream club. I believe the Tic Tac Toe Club was approved.
Yeah, that, that, I never really understood that one. That was from a few years.
Point of clarification though too is that any club that's in, in ID, is non-stipendant. So it's the, what Joe was speaking of is the after-school ones, after-hours. Still.
And after-hour ones, can, can you use parent volunteers for those if they do the element? Like I found one of those, the elementary after-school club. Can you do that at the middle school or must it be a teacher?
Thanks, Marshall. I'm sure all of our students are excited with all the options that you've outlined.
We continue to expand all of the opportunities for kids in different multicultural, multi-interest areas. And we hope that we are accommodating as many as possible. And if there are others that we simply don't have, by all means, look into it.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, moving on, I'm going to do my MCIU report next week. Um, is there a North Monaco report, Stephanie?
Uh, we had a meeting last week, um, and we covered quite a few things, but I'll just point out, um, the two things that were of, of the most interest. Um, we did have, um, a presentation by, um, the teacher who is responsible for the work-based learning program. So it's a co-op learning program that they host at the North Monaco, um, school. And you essentially, um, you know, get experience working in, in a trade or in the field that you're interested in. Currently, there's one hundred students who are in this program. And they would have more, they just don't have enough places to send the kids to. Um, the students not only learn the trade, they also get paid an hourly rate for their time on this program. It's phenomenal. This one kid came in, he told us he's like learning how to, you know, build cars. Um, so I thought that was, uh, a really phenomenal, um, opportunity that they offer the students, like an additional resource. Um, they also talked about, and I forgive me, I don't know how to pronounce this person's name, but Senator Hennessy. Um, she, she had done a, a visit at the school. I was supposed to be there, but she changed her time, so I couldn't go. She helped provide a grant for all the physical therapy resources that the school has. So all the equipment, everything, they have a zero-gravity treadmill. They have like, they have top-of-the-line physical therapy resources. The senator helped provide, uh, helped with the funding of that through a grant. And, um, asked them, what else do you need? And they literally walked through the school and said, we need this, we need this, we need that. And, um, they are helping them with, um, they have a grant writer in the office who's going to help them write grants. And one of the things that they're looking to do is update the health sciences wing to, um, increase, um, the footprint, to add another sixteen seats per session for health sciences, because that's right now the, one of the most popular programs. And they don't have, like, there's more demand than seats that they have. So, um, they're completely, uh, you know, they, they actually like gave us a sketch of how they're redesigning the space because there's like hands-on space. They have like mannequins that they do CPR stuff on and they have like real like classroom spaces. And, um, yeah, so they're looking to expand an entire wing of the health sciences for North Monaco. I mean, this won't happen anytime soon, obviously, but it is, uh, something that they're looking to achieve fairly quickly. But that, that's probably the, the, the high, the biggest highlights. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I know, I don't know if Steve is still awake and wants to share.
Oh, just, just to note that with the, the trend to less college enrollment, uh, the opportunities in North Monaco become even more important. So with the eighth grade, uh, learning more, et cetera, these are all good moves, I think.
Oh, and you all should have gotten an invitation to their annual holiday, um, dinner. Um, they do a wonderful job. Um, so hopefully, um, you can make it out there. It's really nice and it's all done by the students. The food is done by the students. Where this, this, the service, like the, the, this, the staff, the students are actually the ones who are passing around the hors d'oeuvres and food. And then they actually have things that they display that they worked on. It, it, they just do a really nice job. So, um, you're all invited. You don't have to be a North Monaco, you know, rep to, to come. Every school board member and every administrator is welcome to attend. And I know, um, I know I have a fun time every time I go, so hopefully you guys can make it. You can RSVP.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our PFC report.
Um, I'll do that next week.
Uh, PRC?
Your report.
All right, then we'll move on to our second public comment period. Excuse me. Um, the board appreciates hearing from the community. A maximum of five speakers will be heard on the same topic. Please limit comments to three minutes. In the interest of fairness and in order to treat all speakers equally, it is the board's practice to not engage in dialogue with speakers when appropriate. All responses will be posted on board docs. Anyone approaching the podium, please state your name, your municipality of residence and the topic on which you're speaking, and the same if you're on Zoom. All right, so in person, sign you to settle.
Hello, everyone. My site is that I was with pain sound shift and the topic in which I'm going to be speaking right today is I would like to propose, um, it could be a club or just an action that you guys do is for a bullying awareness initiative to help with the mental health crisis. After hearing a lot of how you guys, um, are outsourcing a lot of these, um, outsourcing, um, funds and things like that that you guys can't handle. I think that if bullying awareness was something that was brought to the forefront a little bit more, it could help with that because a lot of the issues are based around that. And it would just aim to educate students, um, about the harmful effects of bullying and foster environments that are safe, respectful and inclusive to everyone. Um, some things that it could do is it could be, we could, we could have education, which would teach individuals about what constitutes bullying and its type. Verbal, physical, social, and also cyberbullying has become really, really rampant. And its impact on mental health and well-being. Prevention, we can create strategies to stop bullying before it starts by promoting empathy, kindness and inclusivity. Support, provide resources and assistance for victims of bullying and their families. Empowerment, we can encourage by standing to speak up and intervene safely when they witness bullying. Um, it could be campaigns, ideas, workshops, seminars, educate students, teachers and parents. Anti-bullying pledge, we could have themes, uh, contests, allow the students to creatively express their uh, impact and their issues that they may have had with bullying, whether it be through art, uh, music, maybe even like sports. Um, resources and support. And I just wanted to touch on some key messages for bullying awareness and that could be that art, it is, that it's never okay. Please to speak up, kindness is contagious and be an ally for your peers. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Saida. Nina, does anyone online? Okay, we have one hand raised, we have Carmina Taylor. Carmina, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
I'm going to try to get this in in three minutes. Um, I just wanted to piggyback number one on Paul's comments and just because I was there, just wanted to point out some facts. There were six parents there, two parents were white, there was two community members, seven staff, four school board members. The superintendent and assistant superintendent did not introduce themselves to the community as a whole. They did not share their work with the topics that were of discussion. Um, they did not engage in the small groups and they did not, and they left before the hour was out. I think that's quite significant because you had mentioned that this committee has been in place in four years. And if that's the output that we get after four years, what is being done to re-engage other community members? I wanted to also point out that my answers for, uh, my second public comment questions on November 4th were not answered. I do not have the ability to go in and get the Q and As. I don't know if you have a little bug that Carmina can't get to it, but I have yet to find my questions. But I've been told people have copied and pasted, sent me and my questions weren't answered. I also saw that there's some type of disclaimer that you're going to answer questions at your discretion. If that is a policy, can you please tell me when that changed? Um, where can I find the policy where it states that the district has the?
Carmina?
From, um, respective schools have. And, um, the, the principal keeps saying that the parent isn't allowed to have someone that's not an immediate family member. So I would like to know what is the definition according to Dr. Cressfield for a family member? Because it seems like he's the last one that makes the word, but I really want to know where the policy lies. Lastly, what percentage of the budget from two thousand fifteen, sixteen was allocated for salaries and benefits? And what is the current percentage for salary and benefits for twenty-four, twenty-five budget? All of these things are very, very serious questions because when we look at resources and supports for families, you have to start looking at where's the money going to? And why is there top-heavy in one place and not on the ground for other places? I'm aware that there are three reading specialists in Shady Grove because it's a Title I school. One reading specialist in Blue Bell for five hundred and thirty-four students. Two reading specialists for, um, Laura Gwinnett and one in Stony Creek. Again, where are the resources being allocated? Lastly, every black demographic in all of your six schools are the lowest performing ethnic group in these, in this district? That is a problem. The gap is wider than it was when the PS, when the PCCY report came up in twenty twenty-one. And the gap is even wider than it was when Dr. Cressfield entered the school district. Very big problems that need to be addressed. I hope you will answer my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Carmina. All right, we have no one registered in person, no one else in line? Okay, then we'll close second public comment period. All right, do you have any fourth comments this evening? All right, seeing none, after I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion screen second, all in favor?
Aye.